Schools by forty-four percent are opposed. What I found ironic was the majority of those people felt that seventy-one percent of the fifty-four percent that favored the vouchers felt that there should be increased support for public schools and only twenty-eight percent thought there should be increased support for private schools. So they're good with that, but I'm thinking, I'm looking at that and thinking, okay, you feel that the private vouchers are enough in the public schools?
Or the voucher system.
It could be.
And how it affects the public.
I just found it kind of ironic that fifty percent were for it, but then the majority said, but don't give them, but they should have more money. Yeah, it was odd. Big thing in Madison is, and I've talked about this before, that reading legislation that did pass. It's going to create an Office of Literacy through the DPI. It creates a literacy coaching program and it's going to sign sixty-four contacted literacy coaches to traditional public schools and charter schools and private schools that are participating to provide support to the administrators. It creates a grant to cover fifty percent of the cost of purchasing approved curriculum. It prohibits the use of instructional materials that contain the three cueing.
Versus fanatic.
And it teaches a student to read based on meaning, structure, and visual cues or memory, and you can't use visual cues or memory or meaning and structure. It increases the frequency of screening and diagnostic reading assessments. We hadn't known that was going to happen because they're going to want to test it more, right? And it requires changes in how educators are prepared for teaching. The 2023-25 budget includes fifty million dollars for this and so we'll see how it turns out. The fifty million dollars I think could probably be spent quite quickly because, you know, they never, they never, they never give you enough. And then, big thing in Madison is now, is Governor Evers has vetoed a lot of the state budget. He primarily raised, rolled back tax cuts proposed by the legislature and then partial vetoes that leaves a state with a projected four billion dollar surplus according to the fiscal bureau. Now, the big thing is, okay, so now what are they going to do? They've got to agree on this money. Are they going to spend it? What are they going to do with it? But if they don't come to some agreement, it's going to stay there until the next budget comes winding around. Let's see, and then in the budget, I found this interesting. When he vetoed and moved this and moved that, it gave us a three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil increase on revenue limits, and then it's going to increase the low revenue ceiling from ten thousand to eleven thousand, which were a low revenue for the biennium, but it also, it also ensures that the three hundred and twenty-five dollar increase for the next four hundred years. So I don't know what, you know, who knows with the budget? Everybody's kind of upset about that, but past governors have all done the same. I know it's going to go into the Supreme Court. They're going to fight it, but I don't think, because it's past present, other governors have done vetoes and all this, I don't think it's going to, it's going to fly. But what the budget did, what he did was, it provides ninety-seven million dollars to achieve the special education reimbursement of thirty-three point three percent, which is, will be huge for us. Invest four hundred and six point million dollars for the high cost of special education aid. It's current thirty-nine point five percent to forty-five percent and then to fifty percent in twenty-four, twenty-five, which is, like I said, which is huge for our district because you know what our special education budget looks like, so that's wonderful. Three million dollars for bilingual, bicultural aid. Five point nine million dollars to increase the reimbursement rate for high-cost transportation. Let's see. Thirty million dollars to continue funding for the school-based mental health model, Get Kids Ahead. And the budget increases the state funding one point two million over the biennium to fully fund the state's spartak aid program for eligible districts. So there is money in there. I was really happy to see special ed, special ed won.
And the three twenty-five locked in for however many years before then. It won't, it won't go that long, but I mean, it at least guarantees it for a couple of years we can plan on because we didn't get even any cost of living for, you know, years and years and years.
Yes, yes.
At least the schools can plan in our budget, at least for the next couple of years, we know what we're going to get and that helps.
Yeah, I was reading on this and, you know, Governor Walker, I think he, he put a moratorium for a thousand years on some kind of, I can't remember what it was, I couldn't believe it, for energy, for energy. A thousand years. Okay, I'm done.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, we'll keep going. We don't have anybody in CISA right now, hoping to fill that soon. Don't have a student because it's summer. Don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Shelley, did anybody sign in to speak?
No.
Okay, we're moving right along. Board President.
Sorry, we have one wrote in for public comment that I would like to share. It says, "Good afternoon, I was unable to attend the school board meeting tonight and wondering if you'd be able to announce some good news on my behalf. The class of nineteen eighty-three held its reunion on Saturday, July twenty-second at the Pope Club. Says, 'We were challenged by the class of nineteen eighty-two to fundraise more money than they had the previous year. Within two days, we pulled together items for people to purchase. We even had members of the class of eighty-two crash the reunion to add to the challenge. It was a success and we raised three hundred and five dollars. We hope to continue this event and challenge more classes to participate. I will submit the money to the high school later this week. Sincerely, Amy LaHobie-Johnson, Class of nineteen eighty-three.'"
That's fine.
"We thank them for that."
Yeah. All right, now, Board President, announcements. Update on board vacancy. I am proud to announce that we had a outstanding response. We had actually nine people indicate their interest. One of them did not live in the city, so we have eight that we are going to be looking at later tonight. It's, you know, a wonderful challenge we're going to have to try and pick from that group because there's lots of, you know, lots of different people with different backgrounds and so we'll just have to pick the best one for now, but it gives us hopefully a lot of opportunity to get the people interested and involved in the school district and of course, future elections, which are always coming up, so. So yeah, we will be reviewing all those applications later enclosed and then decide what the next step is. But I was very pleased. Administration reports, starting with you, Jesse.
All right, we'll start off with our facility study. We have representatives from McKinstry and Bayland here to present. I just want to give a little brief introduction to the process that we've gone through here and we'll go into a little more detail, but this process really started about six months ago. We, as the board, decided that a facility study was needed to really look at some of the needs and wants of the district to make sure that our facility, our buildings, our equipment, our resources are up to par and giving the best education possible to our students. And so it began with us looking at three different companies. We interviewed them and narrowed them down to one, which was McKinstry. And we've used McKinstry and Bayland Building for other projects within the district, have been very pleased with them, so we were happy that they partnered with us again for this upcoming project. The purpose of the facility study was really to have an outside organization look at our needs and wants of the district and to give us a perspective of things that maybe just someone who's involved with the facilities every day doesn't get to see. And so their insights, their perspective was really helpful. So I think you'll find the presentations may be very informative, maybe some surprises along the way, and it will help us in making decisions as a district on how we want to move forward. So I want to turn it over to Eric Rones from McKinstry, Brent Schmidt from McKinstry, Jay Tyes from Bayland, and Chris Peoples from Bayland, so.
Thank you. Thank you for, all right. So as Mr. Brinkman introduced all of us, I'm Eric Rones. I've been with McKinstry for a little over a year now. Prior to joining McKinstry, I was, I had a twenty-six-year career in public education with the last eleven of those years as a school district superintendent for the Whitewater Unified School District and Forest Area School District. So I really enjoyed my transition to McKinstry and being able to support school districts, school boards, administrations, as they try to determine facility solutions and, you know, meet the needs of your instructional programming and your greater community. So we're going to go over our facility study, but we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves.
Yeah, Brent Schmidt with McKinstry. I am on the project development side, so I work with school districts all over the state to help identify maybe some deficiencies or areas of improvement from both an energy perspective as well as a facilities perspective. So I, you know, work with development to put together scopes of work and then help put pricing together and kind of move into a contract with the district. So obviously, you know, we're looking at the facility study right now, identifying some areas where we feel like, you know, the district could make some improvements.
Jim Tyes with Bayland Buildings in sales. I was in the field doing concrete through steel direction all the way through, sort of five, six years, and then had been in the sales and estimating area for about the last fifteen. Been at Bayland for fourteen years and I have personally worked with the Oklahoma School District on both the most recent projects here at the high school and at the elementary school.
I'm Chris Peoples. I've been working in architecture for twelve years and I've been a licensed architect in the state of Wisconsin for three. I primarily specialize in commercial, industrial, and educational projects, and basically I work on designing projects to suit the needs of the owners at Bayland.
So again, thank you for this opportunity to partner with the school district and the board and your administration and hopefully I help inform your future decision-making around facility solutions. So as Mr. Brinkman shared, McKinstry, in partnership with Bayland, was hired to provide an independent objective analysis of your buildings and facilities. We did that and identified a number of opportunities and potential solutions and had, in that facility study report that all of you should have received in your packet, cost estimate ranges, so you can begin to start thinking about how you might want to package certain solutions. When we did that, we really were looking at a number of things. We wanted to make sure that we were meeting the needs of your instructional programming, that were there opportunities to make the district more efficient, where there are some edges for growth because you had some equipment that were nearing the end of its life cycle, suggesting need of maintenance, and then also just always trying to be energy-conscious. So we believe that the study that we provided was focused on that and reflects that. As Jesse said, this is a, this has been a six-month process. Our process started with a kickoff meeting back in February. We did the walkthrough in March. We met with a planning committee, which Mr. Brinkman brought together, about a dozen internal staff and two board representatives to review and also interview and determine if we're on, if the facility study items were on the right path and were there anything missing. We then again met in May to review the additional findings or suggestions and started putting together some cost ranges. And then that final facility study report was shared with Mr. Brinkman and then again this evening we're presenting. I mentioned that planning committee. These were the members of that planning committee, just to give you a sense that, you know, it's a nice cross-representation of staff, board members, administration, and it was intended to be able to get their perspective on the conditions of the facility, the programming needs of the school district, your community usage of the facility, and trying to pull all that together to make sure that whatever was identified and ultimately made the report made sense and met not only the school district's needs, but also the greater community's intent for their facilities. One of the things that we did ask the planning committee to do was to kind of think about guiding principles. Now, these aren't certainly formal guiding principles because that is some responsibility of the school board, but we did spend some time talking about what are some principles that if they're looking at facility issues and needs and solutions, what type of lens should they be looking through? So this is just a list and as the board, or if the board decides to move forward with, towards these solutions, you know, you have a good starting point for maybe identifying some guiding principles, if you are going to engage your greater community in some discussions, or maybe create a task force to review this report from the community's perspective, it gives them a lens to look at it as well. But as you look at that list, I would hope that most of it aligns with the board. There was, you know, obviously, safety and security was a priority. Everybody's always wants to be very tax-conscious, making sure that that financial impact is not, that's something reasonable and something the community can support. Access for all students. I can tell you that one of the things that was remarkable to us was clearly your community in great partnership with the district utilizes your facility, so that was also a priority to make sure that the community continues to have great access, considering what's happening in the district, whether it's increasing or declining enrollment, what's happening in the greater community, that decisions are focused on making sure that connectedness, collaboration, whether during the school day or outside of the school day, and that, again, I think that next one, flexibility and adaptability for multiple users speaks to the community use of your facilities. And that, all school districts have limited resources and that whatever is being done, it helps improve operations, instruction, the efficacy of folks within the district. And then finally, the need to make sure that you're engaging your community and getting good input from them as well and feedback. So the facility study, both through our walkthrough and conversation with the planning committee, we identified a number of items and we were able to kind of group those items into themes, and we identified twelve themes that are listed there. We'll be going over those individually, but those themes are remodeling educational spaces to support programming, whether it's instructional or community programming, safety and security. There are some just necessary building upgrades or maintenance works that needs to occur. There's always a need for additional storage. Your track, which supports your track program, is due for resurfacing. Parking lot improvements. It's, it was, we learned that the school district took over transportation and so now there's a need to house and maintain the transportation department within the school district. This district has had a long tradition of wanting to continue to be efficient and sustainable, so that was another theme that kind of rose to the top. The performing arts was, performing arts facility was also identified as in need of improvement that we looked at. Modernizing the learning spaces, making your playgrounds more accessible, and then there was greater conversation, which is pretty broad in scope, around how to improve your campus athletic facilities. So with those themes, I'm going to turn it over to Brent and Jim and Chris to kind of talk about more in depth about the.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So, starting with the educational remodel, we kind of talked about how the interior of the school has the music and band choir areas in it. It kind of does have an impact on the education of areas around because of the noise. So there was discussions around whether in addition for those types of curriculum is needed, or if there was a way to use the existing square footage, and we kind of came up with this opportunity to use some of the egg space that may not be used in the most efficient manner right now for the band and the choirs. We kind of have some, some potential options of what that might look like. And then sort of remodeling that egg tech area with the new curriculum or the sort of consolidation of the curriculums that's kind of coming through here with the egg center. Also kind of helping to consolidate and remodel those spaces for the charter school so that they have a more dedicated space, not that they're only in that center of the area school, but that they have the opportunity to kind of be together and increase the office spaces for specialized staff. So there's staff that are kind of, you know, utilized in the district and they need an area where they can, you know, work from and work with students in and through. So a dedicated space while also maintaining kind of that larger meeting group of the sort of little theater area for the needs that that has without taking all of that space over. So making sure that we have all of those things included was important to the planning committee as well as us, and it was found, and I think a pretty exciting thing, that an addition really isn't necessarily required in order to accomplish all of these goals, so. So anything you guys want to add to that? I don't know. Some other opportunities we looked at were some additional storage, certainly at both schools, but here we'll highlight at the high school. The locker area kind of in the bottom right has some storage space in it, but it's kind of all secluded and difficult to really utilize the square footage to its greatest potential. So looking at kind of adding fence storage to those spaces so that, you know, staff and the athletics department and things like that have a better location for how they're using the storage, able to see into the different lockers and really utilize that space better for the storage that's there. And then getting things off the floor was also kind of a desire, so, you know, suspending the mat storage in the auxiliary gym would allow for additional space to be available and, you know, just make it for a more user-friendly kind of a thing. And then the community has a huge presence in the space that was, like Eric had mentioned, kind of an awesome thing to see as we were walking through, but a need for changing areas for the community members as they come in. So kind of having a locker, you know, dedicated locker and a couple of changing locations for the community members to utilize, whether they're playing pickleball or whatever in the auxiliary gym, or if they're lifting weights or anything else, you know. So again, we found a spot where I think we could kind of tuck that in and not have to do any types of additions, which obviously helps with budget, so. And then at the elementary school, it was discussed that they just don't have enough storage for the curriculum they have in the physical education department. So utilizing some of the space that's in the boys locker room there to extend that small gym storage closet into more of a usable space with some shelving and things like that, I think is something that would be really beneficial for the district and especially the educators in that building. Eric kind of mentioned the track resurfacing is, you know, it's kind of beyond its useful life and is in need of replacement, so captured that on the list. Similar idea with the parking lot resurfacing. A lot of the parking lot has already been done with the additions and previous improvements that have been at the district here, but there's certainly a need for parking lot replacement kind of highlighted there. And then a bus garage was discussed as Eric had mentioned, and it was brought up in one of the planning committee meetings, and I think this is a great opportunity and a great, you know, reason why we wanted to have those types of discussions because the planning committee brought our attention that the district is kind of losing their existing square footage or spaces where the pitching and batting cages are currently utilized. So by adding sort of an addition to what was kind of the bus garage, and we looked at a few different options of locations for the bus garage, we're able to kind of bring that, those uses, that space back to the district, keep students out of the district and then have a place for potential restrooms for spectators or students or whatever for events that are happening on campus. And then also having that space for a few buses to be parked interior, then also exterior as well, while the maintenance staff has some additional spaces for their maintenance equipment and, you know, other things as well from a storage and just being able to work on things perspective.
And there, there's a current building that is sort of a big problem that's going to be removed or.
That would be taken down, yeah, with that sort of a scope input, yeah, there was, you can just barely see the top, exactly, yeah, there's a lot of pest infestation, I guess I'll say.
Older storage.
Having a better envelope on a newer structure would certainly help me with that. From a safety and security perspective, the high school, we kind of noticed that you sort of could get buzzed in and then you walk into the office and then from the office you go back into the hallway to get buzzed into the school itself. So from a security perspective, what you want to kind of do is ensure that you're maintaining flow through the office without allowing people to have an opportunity to get in that aren't necessarily authorized to be in the school. So by simply moving or adding an additional set of double doors from, there's kind of a set there right at the wall where that stairwell is, moving those down a little bit and then adding one additional door forces people coming into the school, into the office, and then also you can force students who are leaving to go into the office to make sure they're signing out appropriately and that everyone knows where everyone is supposed to be. So a very simple, sort of really efficient way to make that office area and entrance a lot more secure, just by moving a few sets of double doors there. And also, it was discussed that the district just acquired a new sort of daycare facility, so adding communication between this building and that new daycare facility to help with IT issues and security of communication and things like that would be necessary as well. In addition to some of the, you know, more structural changes, we were looking at some, a visitor identification system. So an example here is, you know, the Raptor system where visitors come in and they are required to put in the license, that, you know, their license, and it goes through a background check quickly and just ensures that office staff are able to see if there are people who really shouldn't be authorized to be in the school based on, you know, information that would be within that system. So kind of incorporating that throughout the district. And then there are many, many different. And then there are many, many different sets of keys that are required to get around in the high school. Especially, it was interesting as we were, you know, doing our walkthroughs and things, we were given keys. And the elementary school, you get a small key ring with a few keys on it. In the high school, you get one that you better make sure you've got suspenders on. So, you know, rekeying the high school certainly, potentially the district. And then also you can see there's a doorknob, not really ADA compliant. So making sure that we're going to handles and rekeying the interior doors as well. Oh, and sorry, I was also going to mention on that that over the years, it sounds like there have been a lot of keys that have been distributed to coaches and other community members that may or may not be understood where those keys are at, you know, at the time. So just kind of resetting who the district allows to have access to the building after hours is kind of an important thing as well.
And this is not unique to Algoona. I mean, districts across the country experience the same thing, and they try to do a reset similar to what's being proposed here.
It's an opportunity to do it.
We talked about a lot of different opportunities and potential with the playground upgrades at the elementary school. And it was kind of identified that a need for an all-inclusive type of a playground surface was necessary. So, you know, adding more of that rubberized floor for a safer environment for students to play on and a more inclusive environment, especially with special needs students, to be able to access all the different pieces of equipment. And also kind of helps with the maintenance thing. You don't have a lot of wood chips or other things getting into the other play areas and getting pushed around with plows or whatever. So kind of fencing around some of that to really separate that drive from the playground areas, and then as well as adding those inclusive surfaces to the playground areas. And then we, yeah, we identified a lot of areas where just, you know, building upgrades are necessary. So the first one there, there's some plumbing issues from a septic perspective at the elementary school that there's boaters that are kind of emitted from old and kind of rotting piping. So replacing all of that, doing a restroom remodel for the restrooms here in the high school, bringing those up to, you know, a new standard. And this would also help with the efficiency of utility perspective because you can go with low-flow fixtures and ensure that you're only using the water that you need for flushes and things and lavatories and sinks. Some roofing needs to be replaced, especially at the elementary school. And then window and door replacements were identified as well, where there's a lot of the wooden frame type windows, excuse me, that are rotting and just in need of a replacement. From a performing arts perspective, audio and visual upgrades are, you know, warranted. I think the intent here is really to minimize from a visual or from a touch and feel perspective, the impact because it's such a neat sort of historic performing arts center. But, you know, upgrade the lighting and the visuals and things so that the actual activities that are done there are, you know, have a better environment for the listeners and people viewing the space. So, you know, we don't want to really touch the chairs or anything, but, you know, make sure that we're upgrading to probably an LED technology for the lighting that would be for the stage and having a better audio experience. And then, you know, something that might not be seen all that well is the ceiling is kind of having issues and tiles are, you know, falling down and things like that. If we're able to go in and kind of just replace the ceiling, kind of reset that, it would really help the maintenance staff. The way that you have to replace the tiles is not necessarily an extremely safe activity. So kind of resetting that really would help maintenance staff with issues from that perspective, ensuring that, you know, we don't have to be up there with scaffolding or trying to do it from above or anything like that. And then a need for, you know, flexible type of spaces, you know. We started out thinking about that from a district as a whole perspective. And, you know, the staff at the high school thought, you know, maybe they don't necessarily need it. So the elementary school, really though, they don't have the flexibility with the physical building itself because of the age of that building to do much from a remodeling perspective without incurring a lot of costs. So, you know, actually utilizing the existing spaces that you have with flexible furniture and storage areas would really be beneficial for the learning environment of the students and the efficiency that the teachers have in how they're getting through the curriculum. Then we identified some energy efficiency opportunities. So, you know, kind of, the elementary school has a lot of really great opportunity from a water cut. Or you guys have done some great things in the elementary school, let me put it that way, from a water efficiency perspective. You've got the dual flush where, you know, you pull up if you need extra water to go down or you push down if you don't need quite so much water in the bowl itself. Adding aerators and things like that. So incorporating those items into the restrooms here as well would really be helpful. And some of this could be in conjunction with the restroom model, as I kind of had alluded to earlier, but also could be independent if that was desired. Retro commissioning is something where the bones of the HVAC and building automation system are really good. And there's a lot of opportunity to use the existing infrastructure that's there to drive out even more energy waste in the building itself. So looking at sequences of operation and just how the HVAC equipment is controlled and making some minor adjustments here and there can, one, give you guys a lot of, you know, annual energy savings. And two, we can get focused on energy dollars for doing those types of things. And really that's kind of a, that's throughout the energy efficiency list. But just keep that in the back of your mind. There's opportunity there for focus on energy incentives with the energy efficiency items. Another item was occupancy-based HVAC control. You guys have demand control ventilation in a lot of spots where you're looking at the amount of CO2 that is in the building and minimizing it that way. But you can also do temperature setbacks and things during occupied times with occupancy controls. And then looking at few wood controls as well to make sure that we're only ventilating when necessary and not all the time. So I think there's one more energy efficiency. Yeah. The district has done a fantastic job of just internally updating the lights, the LED. There are a few areas in the district that still are fluorescent. So just bringing those up to speed, I think, I'm not sure if it's complete yet, but I know that the elementary school classrooms are being done this summer. So the hallways, I think, are left there. And then that's kind of the bottom right photo. It's just an example of the hallway. And then the kitchen here is still not LED. So just bringing them all up to the same type of technology. And then walk-in cooler and freezer controls are just an opportunity to add additional controls to help the quality of the product in the spaces as well as minimize the amount of energy that is consumed. So it's a pretty neat and effective way to really maximize the operation of the walk-in coolers and freezers. And adding, I noticed that there's a vending machine without the occupancy type controls on it that would qualify for that as well. So. And then we talked about athletic field upgrades. There's a lot of opportunity for potential upgrades to the athletics and the, at least the surfaces and the playing environment here on the campus at the high school. So, you know, if the track resurfacing were not necessarily done, but you wanted to have a larger football upgrade, you could expand the football field, get it ready for soccer, and then redo the track, put, you know, stadium-type seating or bleacher-type seating there, add lights so that the athletics could be done, you know, at night and evenings. And then all of this could be in conjunction with that bus garage where the restrooms are there for spectators and things to use. And then obviously we need a new scoreboard. And really with kind of keeping with that theme of, you know, the community really utilizing the spaces, potentially having kind of a walking path around the exterior of the campus where people can, you know, walk around and really see all the great things that the district has done. So just a lot of different things that we're looking at from that perspective and kind of ideating with the planning committee.
So the football field and soccer field would be housed within the track?
Yep, that's the, with this type of solution, yep.
Right, with that option, correct. And so that would be a completely different option than just resurfacing the track, is what you're saying? This is another entire way of looking at.
Exactly.
Yeah, because both of those fields would not necessarily fit in your current, inside that current track.
And that would be regulation for soccer and the football, the, okay.
So we kind of put together some budgets associated with each of those categories, facility improvement measure categories from kind of a low end to a high end. The flexible spaces we left as kind of to be determined because you could do one classroom, you could do one grade level, you could do the entire school. So still wanted to think about that a little bit more as a group. But these are the budgets that we've kind of come up with for the individual items and looking at the costs of moving forward.
So you have a low here and a high here. Does that, does it, high take going to come for inflation? So there's a lot of districts now that are past the referendums and now they're finding out that they don't have enough money to do what they want to do.
Yeah, we've included like cost increases in there for inflation. Ideally, we'll be within that range. You know, we're not looking at 10% per year again, but.
You do the best you can.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's, that is the, that's the report. Are there any questions related to the report itself, the information within the report?
I do. Why would we build a garage for three buses when we have four? Don't we have four buses? Five, so why would we build a garage for three buses?
I think the idea for the garage was more as a maintenance facility with the ability to store during the winter months. Some of the buses could be stored inside. This is obviously not a final design, so we can modify it to suit the district's needs because there also was discussion of needing to store the landscaping equipment inside and have maintenance area for that as well.
And then on page seven, there's two charter school areas. Is that putting in a little bit more to me?
That says this in, that says this is based on page seven, not the proposed.
Can I get my magnifying glass up to see this?
There is, so like sort of in the proposed area.
Okay, I see which, okay, I, okay, got it.
The, well, I think your point is still accurate though because in the proposed selection section, you know, bringing in as much as we can from a space perspective to where the current kind of band and choir rooms are, is desired, right? And from trying to match the amount of existing square footage and then also looking at, you guys are currently kind of in the midst, I believe, of moving the existing admin area or the district office. Yeah, from upstairs to down below. So that space also could be used for charter school. We just kind of put it in there as a line item of opportunity, not that it has to be, but trying to kind of match existing square footages while also looking at really consolidating as much as we can of those spaces.
Just a question probably for you, Chris. In looking at the proposed where the charter school is going to be, which would be right next to the little theater, right? Is there any way that there could be like a door put between those rooms to have access? I mean, I don't think little theater is used all the time, is it? I mean, but it just would, I mean, I don't even know if that'd be helpful.
There actually, there actually already is a connection between the back of the stage, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is, gives us a lot to look at and gets reasonable feedback.
So then that leads into what we would recommend based on what other districts typically do following the facility study, and that is engaging your community to get feedback to determine how you might want to move forward with further refining solutions. So what we've done is we've kind of laid out a process that might be of interest to the district on how to move forward with this information, engage your community, and then ultimately decide how you might want to move forward. So I believe that was shared. This is the scope of and timeline of if you are interested in engaging your community. Typically, we would begin by meeting with the district administration, district leadership to kind of lay out that process and see, you know, kind of what timelines you're interested in meeting, reviewing the scope, who you'd like to involve, how do you get a nice cross-representation of your community to be involved? As I mentioned earlier, the board typically would have a conversation about, do you want to engage the community? If you do want to engage the community, are you going to have an ad hoc committee that you'd like to form? And what's the charge of that committee? Providing them maybe some guiding principles to give them some fence posts to work with it. And then typically, if you are going to pull that committee together, you know, district, it varies from districts and it depends on the scope that they'll be reviewing. I would think that based off of the scope that we presented in this facility study, you could have three meetings that would provide good educational opportunity, garner good feedback from your community, help refine that information, and start thinking about, are we on the right path for solutions or do we need to do some tweaking? Another step then to further engage the greater community is to consider a community survey. Surveys are a great way to not only get a sense of what your community wants and how they would react to the, you know, proposed solutions, but also it's a way to educate the community about what the district's been thinking about and how you came to these conclusions and what does this really mean and what does it look like? And then typically you'd bring back that community advisory group again to review the survey results, further reviewed by the administration, and then again to the board to decide what's the logical next step. How might you consider funding this? Is it through fund balances? Is it through IRA federal dollars? Is it through a potential referendum? There's a variety of different ways to address facility solutions. But at that point, that's where the board would try to decide. So.
Through this process, I don't want to speak for the board, but I believe that the board is all, would be united in that, yes, we are going to want to involve the community in terms of our decisions. We have to make sure that everybody is on the same page with what we're looking at. So there will be, obviously, all the steps you talked about and things will get sort of refined and there'll be a lot of education needed. Will you guys be available to field questions in some of these like meeting situations? with the community?
Yeah, actually, that would be part of what we would offer is to help with the agenda planning. I mean, ultimately, it would be, you know, Mr. Brentman and, and team to share this information, but we would certainly help provide structure to the process, making sure that, you know, gathering information so you can present it. If the board decides to move forward with, let's say, a referendum, then typically you move into an informational campaign and at that point, we would be supporting, you know, the creation of materials and collateral kind of things that the district could then push out and share.
And in these educational sessions with the community, you guys could be available for some of them for...
Right, and, and for those kind of community meetings, we would, not only would we help with the, particularly myself and communication specialists, would help with the agenda planning and process planning, but also would be in attendance to help make sure that it's a productive use of everyone's time.
So I have a few going back a little bit, but on the bus garage, was it included in that? Is that just a shell over building or what, what is all included in that price?
So it's designed as a pre-engineered metal building?
Yep.
How about, Jim, can you probably speak more to the...
Yeah, pre-engineered metal building, basic mechanic use, so make a bear unit, LED lighting, garage doors. Again, there's no recessed oil pits or anything of that nature or any equipment that you may, you know, the district would need, but as far as the shell of the building goes for that particular use is covered. So your heating, infrared, yeah, infrared heaters.
All right. And then on the energy side of it, on that whole packet that you had of the energy efficiency, what percent is going to come back and focus on energy, do you think?
What percent of the cost?
Of the cost?
Oh, a little over 10 probably.
Okay. I think they're way high.
I think, I mean, we can look into it further if you'd like, yeah, but...
And then is there, is there any grants that you know of that are available?
Outside of Focus?
Outside of Focus?
There are, yeah, the energy, the Office of Energy Innovation does have a grant program. I don't know if it's going to be out in 2024, but typically the, applications are due in January of the year that they're holding it. That is another opportunity and then obviously the IRA has some potential for funding coming in, but the majority probably of the incentives and grants would come through Focus on Energy.
Okay. All right.
The retro commissioning program through Focus has a prescriptive program based on the square footage of the facilities. So I think that's where the majority of the incentive would come from is through that prescriptive retro commissioning program.
Okay. Just because if I just do the math, it's, it's, if we're gonna, if the school district's gonna save $33,000 a year, that barely pays for the interest that we're spending them at $800,000.
Yeah.
So I was, I was wondering how much Focus on Energy is covering up that cost?
Yeah, yep. I think we estimated a little over $70,000, I think, for the most.
Okay. Then were my questions for now.
When you did the energy analysis section of, or utility analysis and baseline section, I didn't see the solar panels separated out, is, is that all included in your...
Yeah, so if you actually look, it's interesting, if you look at kind of, you know, big picture, look at the square footage of the high school and the square footage of the elementary school and then the electric use of the high school and the electric use of the elementary school, you would expect that the high school would be consuming a lot more electrical energy than it actually is. And I think that's where you can see the impact from the solar array is just you're not, your, your energy use index specific to the electricity is significantly lower than it would have been and you can directly see it there. Does that answer your question?
I would just add the natural gas averages on here for the middle school and high school are not going to be accurate because of the overcharging that we've been from different EPS. So I would suspect they'd be anywhere from a third to half less than what you are seeing on the graph there.
And what was the reason for the fact that we were overcharged?
Uh, the meter was inaccurate, it was reading the incorrect number of thermes that was being put in.
Yeah, that, that jumped out to us, me, I mean, I think that probably would have been uncovered if we've continued to look at that. Yeah, it was surprising how high.
Good find.
That, yeah.
Anything else?
A maintenance building, I guess that's mainly one for Jesse. Where is, I mean, do we currently have a maintenance building and what is that going to be reused for if they're putting anyone up?
Yep, so we do have currently a maintenance building, we have one for the vans, we have one for the equipment, tractors, lawnmowers, the trucks with the Sanders for plowing and stuff. The space that the maintenance guys have is pretty full, I would say right now. I wouldn't see them using a lot of the space of the bus garage that was put in there. I think we would dedicate that more just for the transportation needs of the district. And we wouldn't be doing any of the oil changes, those types of maintenance projects on the buses. We don't have anyone certified or qualified to be able to do that. It's really just more the washing the buses down, you know, some of the paint touch-ups, those types of things that would be done in there. Thanks, guys, thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right, continue.
Yes, so the other thing I had for the board tonight was our COVID mitigation plan. This is a requirement to update this annually as part of the ESTER funding, so included in your board packet and out here for the communities to view. There are no significant changes to the plan itself. It's just updated with an update basically that's approved by the board, so we continue to receive our ESTER funding.
Is this, is there subject to change? Have you changed some of these things?
Possibly, you know, I think you have a question?
Well, I, I, you know, in light of, okay, so look, social distancing, six feet, well, now we find out that that six feet wasn't based on science, that was just a number they, they thought would be.
What page do you want?
Let's see, page four. You know, it does, they're putting details on the floor, I mean, and I'm sure, I'm sure we had it was every, every six feet, well, you know, that's, there's some science to that. And even same thing with face coverings, I mean, now there's, you know, so many studies came out that said...
It says it's applicable on all of these though too. Someone still does allow us.
Right, but there is, there is one here, there is on the page, that if a child has COVID and doesn't get tested, they have to wear a face mask, well, that face mask had little to no effect on COVID, it probably did more harm than good to kids.
I would...
That is something we would have to have board then take a vote on because that was our policy that we had put in place.
Right, one...
And it was, and it was...
Before anybody knew anything.
Yeah, but it also was, you know, we have to go look at what the current CDC guidelines and state guidelines and all that because we wouldn't want to take any chance of invalidating our ESTER money when we are saying things are optional. I mean, there's going to be different opinions that...
I understand that, but...
So...
Told me the basis for that and I'll be happy to go along with this.
Is there an end date for this ARC Act?
Uh, so the funding runs out in September of '24.
Okay, so, so this can all be put to rest in September of next year? Okay.
We've not had a COVID case since, that I don't know, since probably March.
There, there's one thing on page seven that I just think is sort of awkward the way it's written because it makes it sound like we're beginning something when we are continuing it, is under student academic needs, second line, the district plans to continue full-time in-person instruction, which that's what we want to do because that's what continuing, beginning the fall of. So I thought, why do we have beginning there? Because we want to continue the full-time in-person instruction, the fall of 2023.
Right, I think when I, when I wrote it that way or edited what was in there, it was the start of the school, this coming school year was my perspective.
But the, but we have been doing it and we're continuing to do it, so...
Right, right, and so the plan is for this upcoming school year, but you can definitely edit, change that.
Yeah. I think we just take out beginning, it would make it clear that the fall of 2023, we're going to be doing full-time as we have, we're going to continue.
Makes sense.
Any other comments? Yeah, this is strictly, this is every six months we have to look at this until our ESTER funding.
Is all in here?
All right, any other questions for Jesse? Moving on then, elementary principal's report.
Katie, please. Just a few quick things to share from this past slum. During the week of July 10th, we held a pop-up summer school session in collaboration with UW Extension. It was a cooking class for students entering grades four through six, so they learned about healthy meals, they learned about the, some foundational skills of cooking, they made like two to three different food items each day, ranging from ice cream to waffles to great cilantro and usual brobigs. So they really, they really touched on a variety of things and it was a really great time. Mrs. Krieger was the teacher for that, so kudos to her for taking that on the summer as well, but that was, we had 16 students, so it's a limited size class, so we had 16 students participate in that. That was a really awesome opportunity. I am happy to report that as far as staffing goes at the elementary, besides special ed para support, we have filled all of our open positions, so that includes a new ID teacher, a library paraprofessional, and then a 4K kindergarten paraprofessional. Very much looking forward to them joining our team. And then we had some professional development for some of our teachers in the area of math in June, at the very, very end of June after our last school board meeting. If you remember me talking about the Bridges math curriculum, that is something that we are looking to expand adoption for and implementation for, for grades three through four. So our third through, fourth grade teachers and special ed staff attended a two-day implementation training where they basically got to get their hands on the materials, learn about the layout of the unit, the lessons. We even got to engage in some of the problem solving and discussion as if we were the students, so it was a lot of fun. And then in grades kindergarten through second grade, they also had a half-day of training. They've been using the curriculum, but this was just more of a deeper dive into the nuts and bolts because of any curriculum, there's just always a lot and it's good to just take some time to learn more about it. And then next week, the first two days of August, yeah, who first two days of August? We have a bunch of teachers coming in for the day, for two full days to work in the area of literacy, so that would be with our district reading specialist and our reading interventionist. We're going to lead them through some work and then the grade level teams will have time to work and start planning the units to kick off the beginnings of this school year, so it's always nice to have them in. July is a little lonely sometimes if they're not in school. Just mommy and I, Shelly and you guys. So it's, it's always been a serious thing, so that's all I have.
So Bridges will basically be kindergarten up to fourth?
It, it'll be kindergarten to fourth and then this year we have to make some decisions on what that will mean for fifth through sixth grade, so. They run more of a middle school schedule, so we might have to look at some other options for them. And it does include 4K, a little bit of a different format, but are using the same language and resources as well.
Any other questions for Katie? All right, well, keep moving, middle school, high school, principal's report, Dave.
Uh, just giving you an update on the Leadership Tribe Venture. We have 28 incoming seniors that are all camping with four staff members, camping and traveling the greater west. I believe they're tonight, camped out in Yellowstone, had lots of great experiences, including a elk herd stampede. Today there was a grizzly and a black bear at different times, they've seen moose, trying to think all the things that they've been seeing out there, but they're having a great time, everybody's well, healthy and they're, they're learning some history as well as some natural sciences out in Wyoming today.
That's such a wonderful program. Anything else? All right. Pathfinder, welcome to Venture Academy Report. Katie?
Yeah, so Jessica Brogley was an education professor at UW-Plattville, reached out to Abby and I. She hosts a podcast called The Proud Rural Teacher Podcast that she created in the last two years, wanting to have us tell our story about ABA. So we are going to be bringing in a couple of students, doing some Zooms with her, getting, usually she has like an hour-long podcast about obviously different opportunities in rural areas, not necessarily just in Wisconsin, but in the United States, so we're really excited to be able to just kind of tell our story the way we wanted to, the who, what, where, why, when of ABA and have some students tell their stories and their experiences in ABA, just kind of reach to a broader audience about everything we have to offer here. So we're really excited about that. And then for Pathfinder, the facilities crew installed new floors, which we're really excited about because the carpet in there was absolutely disgusting. It was still in there from the bank, ooh, and it was the bank, so ripped that out, installed new floors and new cafeteria in the kitchen is being installed, so a little fresh start for the school year starts.
I realize we really should have slash childcare, perhaps. You want to give us a little...
And we're all, I don't know what else to tell you. Fall's still a new staff member. I've been getting the kids out to the library events that they've been putting on, which has been really fun, learning how to walk on a little, I call it a leash, but the childcare leash has been a real fun event, but yeah, we're getting them, we're going to do it each day in a couple of weeks.
So we could still use another childcare worker?
Yeah, we have a prospective person, but...
Any other questions for Katie? Okay, well, keep going, special ed wellness report, Marie.
I'm going to embarrass Shelley first. I just have to brag about her because she is amazing and I don't know if she gets enough kudos for how much she does, but she's been helping out with some of the special ed stuff and we started a project together and she essentially just took it and ran with it. She organized all of the special ed files. we started a project together and she essentially just took it and ran with it. She organized all of the special ed files. They were like a huge mess. After Wendy retired and we didn't really have anybody in that role, Katie can vouch, like, we just didn't really have a really great organizational system, and Shelley took it within like a few days, and it's just amazing. So I'm super grateful for her help and she's been kind of getting her feet wet with some of the um, special ed program we use for a program called SEED, so she's going to be doing training this summer so that she can help out with some of the um, behind-the-scenes work of scanning and entering things and getting some forms and nailing. It'll be a huge help, so I've been super grateful for her, and I just want everybody to know how many to choose. That was the first thing that I had. Sorry, Shelley. Um, the second thing, I, before the meeting, I placed this little kind of rough draft packet by you. Katie and I, and with, kind of with Dave as well, just really as a leadership team, we've been trying to have some intentional conversations around um, the multi-level systems of support. So these are a lot of things that we already have in place, but just we saw a need for creating more of a framework for um, teachers as a resource when we're having um, new curriculum, like with the Bridges or with some of the literacy work that we're doing at the elementary school. This is a framework for the teachers in the event that there is a student that may not be responding to the lesson or is excelling in the lesson. Um, just kind of a step-by-step guide as to how we are going to collaborate as PLC teams and use the data to be proactive. Being overseeing special ed, it might sound kind of backwards for me saying this, but like, my mindset is always, how can we be proactive and prevent the need for special education? Special education is intended to be the most intensive support where sometimes there's a mindset that in order to get support, a student needs to be in special education, and really, that's kind of a backwards mindset. Um, since law changed in twenty thirteen for a response to intervention, we as four districts want to provide any supports that we can to be proactive, to provide intervention to, I'm being redundant, but to prevent the need for a special education referral. Obviously, there is exceptions to that, but this is just a nice little framework to explain the work that we are doing. Um, with that, we've created a people services forum for staff um, to submit to a people services team for us to review and provide strategies or suggestions, um, but really just kind of a rough draft, as it says, for a process that we are hoping to get started with in the fall. Any questions on that? I didn't really give any time to review it, I'm sorry, but.
No, I think this looks good.
That is all I have for this meeting.
Any questions for Marie? We didn't have any committees meeting because policies we finished last month for now.
Staring back up though.
I know. Um, other items for discussion, school board convention. Um, I know it seems very early, but Tammy said that it, you know, she really needs to know by the middle of August, a pretty darn good idea of what, how many rooms and where we want to stay. Because otherwise we won't get them. What we thought last year was, because there's the opportunity to cancel if you don't need it, you don't get a full refund, is what we found out last year.
Oh.
So um, we got, we sold the paper one night out of the three. So that's, you know, real money. So if you can all think about it, I mean, the dates aren't here. Um, I know it's a whole different story when you um, are working, have a family, and have to take vacation dates for it. I, I remember those days. Doesn't make it as easy as once that isn't the case, so um, take a look, see if it's feasible, and then maybe I'll try and do a little poll of everybody um, second week of August or something till we can give her the information, okay? I mean, I think it's, you know, it's usually we go down on a Tuesday. And there are some Tuesday afternoon sessions that when I was a new school board member, I took advantage of. So certainly that just depends on how early in the day we would get down there. Wednesday's a full day, Thursday's a full day, Friday's a half day. Um, really good information. But again, sometimes board members have chosen to do part of it, haven't been able to, you know, or, you know, either able or wanting to use vacation time for the whole thing. Um, but, so think about it, look at the calendars, decide if you can come to any or all of it. And then we'll try and get the information to Tammy. She had asked, um, I'd said we stayed at the Devil Tree. That's where, you know, we've been staying, but you, I guess, you had men- mentioned, what about just the Hilton?
What's the difference in price?
Okay, so we should have her check.
Check it out. What's the difference in price?
She's booked. She's got to check that.
And, and it doesn't, you know, you don't, and you know, you get your family's kids, jobs.
Yeah.
Um, you don't have to go down the whole time. Some people just come home for a day.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
People can come for a day. Um, we can usually get, um, I mean, there's, the main sessions are Wednesday and Thursday, so if you're going to come for a day, you want to come for one of those because those are four days of sessions. But yeah, exactly.
And you'll get a book of, of all the sessions out there. If you find something that you really want to go to, a couple of them, you might just want to go down for the day.
Yeah, Milwaukee isn't that far. It's, you know, certainly something you don't even have to stay overnight if you don't want to, so. So anyway, think about it, and we will try and get her that information. All right, moving to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so.
Second. By Lonnie, second by Chris B. On favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion um, to accept the bills that were presented to you.
So move.
Second, motion made by Pat, second by Ann. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the co-curricular code handbook as presented.
Let's move.
That was Chris? Motion made by Chris?
A second.
Second by Chris B. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the coaches' advisors handbook as presented.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
All second.
Second by Ann. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the milk bid. We had it at your um, spot when you came. It looks like we only got one. Oh, no, I guess Dean and Ann carried it.
Uh, that's fine. Give an inch and then a second, then I'll explain a little bit.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Chris B. and Ann.
Okay, um, so we put three bids out for um, milk prices and we only received one back. The Prairie Farms is the one we have gone with last year, and they submitted a bid for this year. Um, the Dean Foods was one we had in twenty-one, twenty-two. See the difference in the price from um, comparing on two years with Prairie Farms. Actually went down about a penny per carton for the upcoming school year.
So um, given there was only one bid that um, that was returned, um, the motion and a second would assume to be the Prairie Farms. Okay, um, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, we are going to table the bread bid as we have not gotten anything back. I need um.
I'll make a motion to table the bread bid till we get some bids.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
One more, okay. I need a Pat, second by Lonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Wisconsin model academic standards for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, second by Chris B. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I heard a few ayes. Thank you. Opposed? I need a motion to approve the COVID-nineteen safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Oh, move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second? We need to approve this or modify it in order to continue our ESTR plans because it is required to submit, so it's um, I have a motion.
Since we needed to get our funds, I guess I seconded.
Motion by Ann, second one by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess with that, can we put it on our committees to look deeper into that? Even further? Before six months?
Before the end review, absolutely.
As like Pat brought up earlier.
Yeah, and there might be even more. All right, um, motion and second, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I um, request for future agenda items. Anybody? All right, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five subsections one C, E, F, and I for personal matters, hires, staffing designations.
I'll move.
Chris S., second one Chris B. Whoa, 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 Chris B.?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
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 Chris S. and Lonnie. All right.